Great, the preschool team was very flexible. And setting up and unsetting up and setting up their rooms again. The good news about that is it helped us to prioritize in the floor replacement area. So we are scheduled to have all pre-K floors replaced in the week of February vacation. So those are scheduled and good to go. We have a DA step performance coming in on February 13th. And this is brought to us in partnership with a diversity inclusion group, which is a community-based committee and the PTA. So we're looking forward to that. And we had a lockdown drill that was pretty successful. And we're looking in the springtime to do a reification during our earlier lease. More hands-on drill. So there's many families are kind of impacted with their nicotine addiction and with the introduction of vaping. And Scott Dredge has offered to come over and do an education for families. We're encouraging all sixth grade families. We're opening it up to the district, but we're going to host it here in Deerfield. So that's coming up. I believe it's in May, but I'll get you the date if it's not on there. And then again, we have our social justice workshop coming in, Sapphire, that's coming in on March 8th. And that should be able to work with our diversity leadership team, our faculty, and our whole education component too.
Right.
We've got classroom use. We saw some classroom use, a preschool, I said lots of students in beach ocean ice cream shop. It was very entertaining to walk into a classroom that was flooded with a pool set up already for the flood. It's like, oh, good timing. I just knew what the day was to actually do it. Fifth grade went to UMass and saw a play by Harry Tubman. It was kind of sketchy because we had a delay and we were concerned we were going to miss it, but luckily everyone had delays. So they worked up on it and asked where we were to get there. Yeah, it was in fifth grade, sorry, specials, we're doing some archery and PE, the Spanish. They did a hundred day parade and went down to kindergarten and sang their hundred day song and they're learning about body parts and things like that. So.
Great.
A hundred days of school time, too.
All right. How would the, were there any issues with the parents of pre-K folks during that particular week? I mean.
Yeah, it was very flexible. Nice. We kept one room open and the other two.
Okay.
All right, great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, shall we move to financial statements?
Sure. And I just realized that I emailed it, but I did not print it out because I was busy working out the FY20 questions. I apologize for that. But as I reviewed the results for the month of January, there are some lines that do have some deficit in themselves. We'll need to start Tina soon so we can kind of work through them and see how we can make those lines whole and make sure that everything is in a good, a good place in terms of the overall budget operations. I don't see anything glaring. I think those are all things that we can certainly deal with by just transferring funds between lines. So I don't see anything that's going to cause panic or any of that kind of business within that. Also have a set goal. It's a pretty good sign, so.
What I was going to ask about was electricity and gas. Both of those seem to be going up and they're low right now. I mean, I'm not sure when we pay the bill and do we pay it upfront so we only have a little left and it doesn't matter if we pay it out, you know, schedule-wise. But looking at, I know that's always been a concern every year. And I know that just in town, we're dealing with that, you know, with senior centers getting hit with some, some pre-baiting electricity increases and gas as well. So while you're chalking that over.
Sure.
Look at that as well.
Yep, absolutely. Yep. Yeah, that's my goal now that I've gotten here, the FY20 budget put together is to just sit down, go through this with a fine tune and make sure that things are in a good place.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the next one that you need.
Thank you.
Okay, you have any questions, current questions of that? Could you leave them?
Did you have a total and I just didn't hear the total on the warrants?
I don't think I did a total.
Okay.
Is there a review page?
There is not so far.
There is not.
Okay.
And if that was not done, I can get a total for you. And then come back my way.
Okay. All right, any public comment tonight? No?
No.
All right. Okay, shall we move on to the main item then, which is the FY20 budget especially?
This is literally hot off the press. Well, it's either that or make it so small. It's the easier way to take care of your business. So this is where we currently stand with the thing. So this is still a work in progress, but just to kind of give you the overview of we're at the top end of sort of the 30,000 foot level of this. And you will see some increases in salaries, mostly because of steps. And there is a projection in there for an adjustment. I know we're still in the process of collective bargaining, so you know, we have placed a number in there that obviously will change as we go through the process with collective bargaining. Also, I know that Tina spoke to you at the last meeting about reducing out of district tuitions and establishing a program and special education teacher. That teacher has also been programmed for within the confines of this collective bargaining salary piece.
Okay.
On the non-union folks, again, it's projected increases. There's some change in your cost share with both the district and the union, and you'll see that in a couple of pages. But also we have to take into consideration that any 12-month hourly paid employees next year will work a 262-day year, in part because of leap year and one other day that I can't remember off the top of my head. Administrative, there are some increases as well and projected increases to salary and some cost share changes. The biggest thing that drove this one up was putting full-time business manager back into the budget as a salary item because you had reduced the FY19 budget to do that. So if you notice now, when we get to the operational changes, there's a large reduction in finance and administrative services, and that's because the TMS contract will end on July 31st of 2019. I did move some money from the curriculum director's expense, which is basically curriculum supplies to curriculum stipends. Stipends have been paid to teachers without necessarily a budget line in there. And as I did a look back over history, I discovered that not as much had been spent on curriculum development supplies. So I thought, if we're going to transfer funds, you might as well just budget for it out of the gate. So that's what happened. So we moved curriculum supplies into curriculum stipends, and that actually shows up on the very first increase that salary line. Principal's office, Tina made a minor adjustment to discretionary expenditure, so that's why that changes there. Instructional materials, that looks like a big percentage, but it was a $5,000 budget with a $500 increase, so 10% is what it is. Instructional software, again, changes in your cost share, both district-wide and union-wide, has driven that down a little bit. Instructional hardware is just kind of a minor budget shift. It's essentially the same. Testing and assessment is down a little bit because of the non-renewal of a license for program that's no longer going to be used. Transportation, we have put a placeholder in for regular education transportation. Bus bids are due at the close of business on Monday. We will open them on Tuesday at 1:00. And then we'll see where the dust settles and obviously adjust that number accordingly. There is a reduction in transportation on the special education side because again, with not sending a child out, I'd rather bring a child in here and establishing a program that reduces the transportation on that side.
And that's all one transportation number?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Again, that's for bidding purposes as well. We can separate that out after we get to bidding and know exactly.
Right. Yeah. Insurances, some slight anticipated increases in health insurances. Basically, the Hampshire Insurance Trust is not going to increase the rates, but we know that there's going to be some personnel shifts that may cause some changes in that regard. Also, the building insurance, the vendor recommended that we increase that by 10%. I guess that has not been set yet. And liability and life insurance, the recommendation was 5%. Those rates have not been set yet, but that was his recommendation to do that. And then the other big decrease was the student returning to Deerfield Elementary, which drives down your tuition in Massachusetts schools from $162,000 to $55,000. So that cost savings is obviously funding some of the other things. So the net change from FY18, 19, excuse me, to 20 is $154,449, or this jump to about 3.27%.
Just a quick question about collective bargaining. Do you know what is in there right now for steps? Or what, you said you included some money in there anticipating it. Do you know what that figure is yet?
I am not able to say so publicly because of the collective bargaining process.
That's fine.
All right. You guys, if we go to executive session, we can tell you what the number is and the steps are the ones projected in the current.
The steps are there.
On the current step scale, we'll put a percentage in that's.
Right, just not sure yet.
It's reasonable to be.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
So the governor or House One budget has come out. And so at the bottom of the sheet, I just thought you might be interested in some of the revenue changes. Chapter 70, the final budget for FY19 was $1,104,883. The projection in House One is an increase of to $1,111,203. School choice has been reduced pretty significantly, and that deduction actually happened in December of this year and impacts FY19 as well. So we are keeping our eyes on school choice, and we'll talk about that in a couple of minutes. But there's always an adjustment in December based on what happened at the end of the year prior and also the October 1 count. So that's how that has gone across. There's been an increase in charter school tuition reimbursement because unfortunately on the top side, there's been this in regaling itself, and you'll see that in a minute. So the total revenue is down by about $94,454 on the education side of the equation. So just again, for you to know where we are. House Two, which will be the House's version, the budget will probably come out sometime next month. That's due, we could do that in March. The Senate usually comes out in May with their version. It has been the practice over the past, I would say, five or better years for the legislature to do a higher Chapter 70 number than the governor does. So I think if we use the governor's number as a conservative underpinning of this whole process, I think that that's a safe place to be because as we know, this past year, the governor did not sign the budget until somewhere in the middle of July. So, you know, it's hard to know that particularly going into the town meeting. The next couple of pages are the total cherry sheets. And if I had had time, I would have recolored them cherry because if you're as old as I am, you remember that they are called cherry sheets because they used to come in mail, in the mail, on cherry pink paper. And your parents pretend it is too young to know that, so.
These are blue, so are these blueberry sheets?
Yeah, yes. Anyway, so this first page shows because in, you know, in the, at the end of the day, it's all one big happy button down and the school side. So it's always kind of good to know where the town also stands. So this first page is all of the estimated receipts. Again, you can see the Chapter 70. You can see the charter to school tuition reimbursement having been increased there. You can see the decrease in school receiving, school choice. And then there's the general government aid. And the general government side is up a little bit in terms of your anticipated incoming revenue. If you go to the next page, then you get to the assessments side. And this is what the town gets assessed by the state on. So you can see all sorts of things, air pollution districts and, you know, non-renewal of RMP surcharges and state assessments, transportation authority, regional transportation, those kinds of things. You get down to the bottom of the page, you can see the sending tuition. School choice sending tuition is down, so not as many children are leaving Deerfield. That's good news. Charter school sending tuition is up a little bit. So again, you can see that. And then the tuition assessments overall are down to the town. So the town actually looks in overall, you look in fairly decent financial shape at this stage from the state perspective. You know, we'll see what happens as it runs through the legislative process. The next page is again, taking a look at the student enrollment and what your anticipated percentages of the district and union pieces of the budget are. So you can see that going from FY19 to FY20, that your piece of the regional pie has gone down a little bit. It has happened across the board at the elementary level, and the population has shifted to the high schools. So obviously, other than junior, senior highs, so their share of the pie has jumped a bit. If you look down any costs that are borne by just the union, again, you can see that Deerfield has decreased ever so slightly. And lately has actually increased a little bit, but the rest have decreased. So that's how all of those costs are factored, is based on student enrollment, and then that cost share is done. The next page, because I'm also concerned at watching school choice and just making sure that you're in a good place. And I am pleased to report that you are in a very good place in school choice in Deerfield. As you can see, there was a balance forward and some accrued payrolls from FY18 that led, leads to a net balance forward for this fiscal year of $960,289.28. The anticipated revenue is 401,994, so that leaves you with a total anticipated revenue and the rollover balance of $1,362,283.28.
That seems rather high. And that's.
But that's down 100 from last year, right? We're at.
Yeah, your last year was a 511.
Right, we're down to 401.
And that balance forward has been reconciled between our accounting office and your town account. So that is a reconciled balance. So then I went into our accounting software just to see where things had been budgeted. And it's a little bit of some more digging I need to do in there in terms of some numbers. You have a special education secretary who's funded from that account. Teacher salaries, I'm not quite sure how that number got in there, so I need to sort of dig a little bit. There are a couple of salaries that are not budgeted for as lines, but there's money being taken against them. So that's what I need to unpack there. Classroom IA salaries, those are the things that are all budgeted for. And then there's an arts partnership, some IA salaries for special education, and then general repair for buildings that was posted but has not been budgeted for. So again, those are things I need to dig into a little bit to figure out where we are. So when you take both the total budgeted expenses, expenses plus things that I'm beginning to see posted there, if you take all that into consideration, your balance forward from FY19 into FY20 would be $881,236.28. You anticipate, again, the revenue from FY20, 401,994. You wind up with a totally anticipated revenue going into '20 of $1,283,230.28. Again, I need to work some more on the FY19 budget to kind of unpack why this looks this way. So that's something I intend to do. So just on basic things that we're trying to do within the budget, you can see anticipated expenses of 451,270,80.
Yep.
So at the end of FY20, if all goes according to this kind of projection, you'd be around $832,000 to roll over, which is a good place. The thing that I am watching with school choice, this is one of those things where they call you could fall off the funding cliff if you're not careful. So it's just something you want to be mindful of.
Yep.
If you're looking at, say, your anticipated expenses for FY20, they are in excess of what's coming in.
Right.
So you're now beginning to pick away at what the rollover balance is.
Exactly.
And back in days of yore, most people spent the accrued balance and didn't touch what was incoming.
Right.
For that very purpose. At some point, at some point, you reach that tipping point and then you're in trouble. So, so again, you're not there yet, but it's something you want to begin to become mindful of so that you don't wind up in that place where you're in a tipping point of now living hand-to-mouth as it were.
Right.
And then potentially running into a problem.
And Ken, with your history, that, I remember last business manager always said we would, you know, we would always spend in arrears, she would call it. So, and this.
I'm looking at it, this is, it's a little bit different format than we're used to seeing. But I'm looking at a difference of $80,000 in revenue this year versus expenses.
Yes.
Which is not what we originally budgeted.
Yeah, and so I have to get into the backend of the software and figure out what was what.
Right, the revenue shortfall, a lot of what she did for us on school choice, I don't think was in the, was in the financial software initially because the software was just coming So I have to go back and look at some notes myself to see exactly what it is. But usually we've, just a year where we've always spent, the preceding, or we've always budgeted based on the preceding years, FY19 numbers would be what we anticipate being able to spend in FY20.
Right.
Which is essentially what you've done here. And I see that there's a SED position within the, being shifted out as part of your projected salary increases. So, and we've always tended to have essentially a surplus of about $50,000, quote surplus on that spending plan, of about $50,000 that gives flexibility. I've never seen it presented in quite this way. And if we start putting these kinds of numbers out, town fathers will begin to wonder and want us to spend the money that we've very carefully avoided not spending before we get it. That's my biggest concern as you're finding out this year, school choice is not being funded.
Right.
Like, has the state changed their funding per student? Or it's just we have fewer choice students.
Correct.
Being anticipated.
Correct. And how it works is as, once a number is decided through October 1, there's another dip into enrollment in March, there's another dip in June, and then the following year, when the October 1 count comes out, they do it based on FTEs, total days of membership in the school. We don't know if you're actually physically here or not, but total days of membership. So all of that, and if it's a special education student with an increment on top, that's also done on an FTE basis. So depending on who's in, who's out, when they came in, when they left, all of that kind of factors into that mix.
And some years we wind up, you know, that's our favor. In June, we find out, you know, we have a little bit more than we thought we did.
Right, Patty never included special ed projections. She always just based it on students.
Okay.
From my recollections. So that there was a safety valve.
Right, there's always something that's.
Some factors in it.
Right.
But I have no idea what she did last year. I just know the last chart we saw, I think we still had, well, we had a higher surplus than we had anticipated, somewhere around 80,000 to 100,000 as opposed to the 50.
Right.
And without my notebook in front of me, I can't, can't say exactly what it is.
So again, I need to dig into this in a little more detail to be able to unpack what all of these new parts mean. But this is, you know, what I have discovered at this particular point in time. But I just wanted to, you know, make sure that we're all kind of mindful of where we're at with regard to all of that.
Okay.
And then the last seven pages is the budget and excruciatingly tough.
Right.
Line by line. And so you can see each of the lines. One word of TMS is we do something called an all-funds budget, which kind of shows the total of what's been budgeted. And then you can see that there are some columns that show offsets against that. So for your purposes, you want to compare blue to blue column. So that way, you're feeling like, you know, you're comparing apples to apples. The pink column is just really showing you the totality. So for example, if we were to go to, I need to, I want to explain a couple of things in a little more detail. Let's go to page three for example. Because this is a very big difference.
Question salary?
Yes.
Yes.
And you will actually see this in the February results of operations. We need to take the people who are in the 2310 function, the specialist teachers function, which is about halfway down the page or third way down the page. We need to take and move those salaries into 2305, which is the function above it. We have gotten guidance from the Office of Finance at the State Department that they no longer want that 2310 to be used for regular salaries, but more for stipend-y kinds of things. So the teacher specialist will actually move up into the classroom teacher line moving forward. The adaptive PE, we will create a new line for that particular piece and put that person there. The same thing with the special education teacher. We will actually create a new line within function 2305 and move those monies into the right places. And this is just for the purposes of the end-of-the-year recording and that they are required of us, and we're not going to have any more buckets for our end-of-the-year reports so that they run smoothly and well. So, but you can notice also within the teacher salaries, you can see that there's some offsets with choice, there's some with Title I, there's some with SED assistance grants, and there's some with early childhood revolving. And so that's how we get from the pink to the blue. So, but in your case, that's not how the budget was put together last year. So you're really looking blue to blue to make those comparisons. And the same thing down at the bottom of that page, when you look at the classroom assistance, again, the pink column looks pretty big compared to FY19. And when you look at the offsets, that's what makes that shift. It just makes the budget a little more transparent, lets you know where we're trying to find the things from so that you can feel it, you know, have a better understanding of where all the options and money are going.
Okay.
And it's basically salaries that you're using public funds for at this particular juncture. That's not really much of anything else. So in answer to your transportation question, on page 507, if you look down to transportation, which is function 3330, almost to the bottom of the page, you can see a placeholder in increase in regional transportation or, you know, the transportation budget for the school. And again, once we have the bids open and we know what that number is, that number will be solidified. Based on past contracts and increases, it was running around twenty percent or so, so I just put that in there, again, just as a placeholder, and we'll know more next week when that bid is on end. Special education transportation has got a, an increased factor in it, but it's also got a reduction because of the student coming back to Deerfield Elementary.
Gotcha.
So that's the other big one that we changed. And then on the last page, page seventy-seven, and down at the very bottom, you can see the decrease in tuition in Massachusetts schools going from one sixty-two to fifty-five thousand. And that's in part because you have a student aging out of this school, and in part because bringing the student back.
Change number.
So that's the number that's being used to help, obviously, those numbers are being used to help fund the teacher to support that student, I know this here.
And where are charter school tuitions following this? Is that fifty-five thousand?
The charter school tuition number is on the town side.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah. At the regional level it falls, within the total budget, but at the town level it falls on the town side. Well...
And so what's the sort of, in general, percentage change in here? Is that back on the first page?
Yes, it is. So three point, three point two seven.
Tentatively, right now?
Yeah.
So again, on that, on the top line, the note is moving salaries from school choice to local. We had, I think that was, that's been a direction of this board, right, for a little bit of time, trying to move some of those salaries out of school choice and onto, trying to remember.
We need to do a roster that we did earlier before, and I think we moved one salary out of school choice forward in this proposed budget.
Yes. Again, just be mindful of trying to stay, stay the course of school choice.
So if we didn't have the student coming back, which is giving us a almost two and a half percent offset, we're almost looking at six percent increase in overall operations.
Well, if the student weren't coming back, we wouldn't put any extra teacher, teacher salary.
Right.
And sort of, I'll wash when you come out to it.
And what's the extra teacher?
To support the students coming... Moving it out of school choice back into the budget. This is, or is it an added position?
It's an added position, yeah.
Just support that student?
Yeah, it's not just for one student, it was to kind of increase the continuing services that we provide to the students that have a social, emotional, trauma backgrounds, to just be able to maximize and meet the students' needs, it just so happens that if we put a program in place, the student wouldn't have to go off district.
How many students?
About six. Students identify already that would benefit from this program?
All different.
All different students. And I don't have a sense, looking at the budget, like, are there other new initiatives or changes besides that? Or things that we're gaining or losing? No, we're all pretty level funded, keeping up anywhere it is, we're just adding out the program just to...
Well, that, is there capacity in that program to take a student from another school?
Yeah, it's a possibility. It wouldn't suggest that the first year around...
Understood. Yep, but just once you got on your feet, it might be a growth rate.
It's kind of what we do with that.
And how would we determine what the other town would pay?
We have a lead program now that we already have a kind of a set figure, I think here in therapy it goes out and kind of sees what the other districts are paying, kind of all the money, right?
They're set by the state, right?
I just made that up, and Darius is correcting me, so you know, whatever, you just say it, make a solid point.
The state...
But the truth is very hard for Ramsay.
Yeah, I mean, the state basically sets a ceiling, so that, you know, obviously. And that is true for, you know, other district private placements or whatever else, so that somebody can't charge them exorbitant amount of money.
Just, yeah, that makes sense.
We wait this pot ready to go. Charge them. Well, Deerfield's going to get the revenue.
Your first point.
There's a race on it.
There's a race on.
Yeah. Hi, so close to you.
Right. Race to space.
Yeah. Go ahead. I don't know, I was just going to, thank you, Drew, that was very clear and...
Very good presentation, thank you.
What's going on?
Obviously, we still have some refining to do, so. Here's the first block.
Yeah, great. So everybody, I mean, feel free, if anyone has any other more questions, or ruminati on for a month and...
Yeah. I think we need to, well, are we in a public hearing mode next month, or?
Um, I, um, no, I think we're in month that. No, maybe not, not that.
No, it's March, it's normally March, it's March, so we should, yeah.
So what will we, without going to executive session, will we have any finality to some of our other numbers based on contracts in the next twenty-eight days?
We'll have better transportation numbers.
Yes. Hopefully some heating and cooling numbers, I mean, heating, electricity.
I, I did a survey of some districts to find out what people were programming for electricity, and electricity around seven percent, gas around seven to ten percent, so that's kind of weird.
That's kind of weird.
So I factored those in better as a placeholder.
I mean, the problem is the biggest part is percentage of salaries is the biggest part, it's the most moving thing in my contract, in the budget, so that is, but it is quite possible, we will be taking this town meeting before the contract settlement is completed. It's, timeline-wise, we should be able to finish it prior to that, but you, it takes longer, it's a, it's a process.
So without being in executive sessions, the, there is a number in this bucket?
Correct.
And it is the school's proposed number, or the union's proposed number, or something, somewhere in between?
Spaceholder.
Spaceholder, okay.
So, because you have to be prepared to move forward with it through town, through town meetings, so.
Yep.
I mean, you can't go with the most conservative number, you can't go with the, you know, the, whatever.
No, I understand.
I don't know what you call it, either, I'm sorry, but...
He signs these? Or is Tina signs these? These are reimbursed student activity checking.
That would be too... She doesn't have a lot of those on her. Secondary, I don't know.
Okay, so moving on from the budget then, everybody well set with that?
If I could just answer Trevor's question, there were eight warrants presented for ninety-six thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Thank you so much.
I'm going to make sure that it's the total.
Eight, all right. Someone, eight, if you want a different number, please.
Thank you.
It's also a tally.
So, Garris from...
I guess so.
Tell the budget.
If I had one, if I could ask one question on the enrollment. It appears enrollment's been, has gone down since the start of the year. What's that?
Down to three ninety-four.
Yeah. So I mean, it's not, not a huge number, but it looked to me like we started with...
Four oh one two seventy. Oh, four oh one two seventy. Looks like a seventeen number, just to compare.
Yeah, but I'm looking at K six, subtotal of three fifty-eight in October, and total is, right now is three fifty-five.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't, I didn't add up school choices, but I'm just curious, have we had students move out, or?
Two students moved.
Sorry, seven?
No, it's only, I think it's only a change of three, but you added two, you added...
But overall.
Yeah. I mean, some have added, but, but, yeah, I get that, I just, I was just curious. I haven't looked at the enrollment data last month, and just sort of keeping an eye.
Yeah.
Trying to understand, so, anyway, just a curiosity. Thank you.
So does, you did, I mean, here's the, there's a number budget calendar. It's not, it's not hanging out, it was hanging out a while back.
Right.
But we have this February meeting, which timeline-wise, you know, we talked about at the last meeting, usually we're here in January, and we have another month to go through, so we kind of got shifted back by a month. So the question is, with the adjustment of numbers, is this committee ready to have a public hearing on this? And so I don't know. So basically, March sixth is our next meeting, and the March sixth meeting is the public hearing for the FY twenty budget.
Right.
So, and the normal pattern, I haven't been to this seat, but I've known the normal pattern in the district has been, you have a, you get a, you get near your percentage point, and you go through another meeting of adjustments, and time to think it over and review numbers and that kind of stuff. And so, so what I'm basically asking is, do you want another meeting between now and then, to discuss, or?
I don't, anybody, I don't really feel in need to do that. I feel like you're going to give us some updated numbers, which you could get to us just without having a meeting, so we know what that are, with a nice sheet like this.
Yes.
And it doesn't sound like there's any sort of controversial big changes that often bring up more interesting debates about program cuts or additions, or, so I don't, that's what I'll speak to, but I don't know why we wouldn't want to keep moving along.
If there is, you know, then if there is a big change, then we, all meeting.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Want to go with that?
And talk about it.
Because you're right, it is, it is a, what we like to have is a boring budget.
Yeah.
But...
Boring would be nice.
Boring is nice.
It's boring.
Like our school meetings boring, we like our budgets boring.
Yeah.
We like school fun.
So I mean, I think we, I mean, we've typically tried to get to around two and a half percent.
Right.
Which is, that's point seven five, is refining thirty thousand dollars in this budget. To get down to about two and a half percent might be difficult, given what was laid out so far. But if we, if it doesn't go up, I'd be comfortable holding a public hearing next month. What do you think, Karen?
Yeah, I agree. If it does go up, I think we should talk about it.
Right, well, if it does go up, we're definitely going to be having to talk about it.
Yes, and it's, and, I'm trying to think of the, I mean, really...
And I think the two things that probably woke up most is my digging into school choice, finding out what's behind those numbers and how that impacts all of this, as well as obviously the transportation, it'll, you know, if it comes in less than what I projected, that's...
That'll be great.
That's great, and that could be helpful certainly right then and there. And then, you know, the big thing is south boys.
Right, right.
That we don't want.
No, obviously, that's, it's going to take some time.
So would you expect that, if you needed to get down to two and a half, would you expect that to be presented at the next meeting? Add around two and a half if it's possible? Or would you go with, what was it, three point two seven now? I mean, I know it's probably going to shift some. I mean, once you have your public hearing, whatever number it is, is what's out there.
Three, I would go with the three point two seven at the public hearing, and then, you know, see what...
We could play out a scenario that says this what, this is potentially could happen at three point five, so you'd know that, and we could run the numbers both ways.
That'd be helpful.
And, you know, Tina and Darius and I could certainly work together to do that kind of scenario, building...
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Uh, is it March sixth?
March sixth, six o'clock. That sound right?
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a week.
It's that week. It's that night we'll have to move the meeting.
We will move the meeting.
You are the chair, never should have this privilege. Although, you know what, actually, you can.
Oh, you can, well, depends on when you post the public...
It's, thank you, but if you're pausing, if this is the, whatever one, so if...
That's going to be, that's going to be... Do you want to know what later, is that you're saying, or earlier?
Well, when do we have to post it, though?
Well, the time can be potentially changed.
I gotta post in my paper, don't I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm saying that, I know the question, but just saying, confirm my love, but yeah, that's got to be posted in...
Like, two weeks or something.
Yeah.
And I think you've got to run it twice. It might not be, I just know that...
Oh, they won't be getting them. No, first round, first rounds are Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday. It's Thursday, and then, whatever it is on Saturday, so. Wait, if your son is, if your son is a senior, and he's a point guard, you gotta do some special...
You gotta watch Pioneer, too, so. These seniors take rest.
Right, they're only seniors once.
Exactly. I'll already check basketball, call Maurice Anderson, we'll get the basketball schedule.
Okay. Do we have a further report on super tenant besides budget stuff?
For me? Yeah, I mean, a quick handout and a go-through.
Yep.
And I'll just kind of fire through it. The negotiation schedule's there, we're a little bit further along with the IAs, because the teachers had to reschedule the last meeting, so we made it just the IAs, so, I mean, there's stuff to report on that, but we can, it's not, proposals were exchanged, but there's no, there's no progress yet made on those proposals, but if you want to go to executive session, we can discuss that. We talked about the contract, the bus contract is out there. I did a handout regarding the rural aid, just some different, just to keep up to speed on what the different conversations are out there. As you know, the, you know, the rural aid that happened this year, you know, was proposed at around nine million, it came back one point five, and Deerfield didn't see any money settled, and saw just under five thousand, so it's not really, and so, was not earth-shattering, there's a new push again to at least try to get that same amount back, but they're also looking, because a lot of schools that, due to the changing of parameters, didn't get any money, and schools that are in less rural areas but are in need of, they're very strapped, and some are neighbors to the north that didn't get a cent as well, so I attached an email of the new formula that they're just thinking out there, it's just food for thought to keep you in the elevator conversations with other school committee members throughout the valley, kind of, if that makes sense. So, that's, that's there. Next school meeting, we also have to do school choice, and so, I have to go on the next community meeting, and the business manager for next year has been posted, and my timeline is to post for this month, go through the interview process for March, so they can bring it to a joint session, and we'll just do those smoothly in April. That's the timeline there, cheers.
So, I know we haven't voted on the contract yet, but I want to congratulate you on publicly, at our meeting here, on a secure position as our superintendent for quite a few years now, very excited for that.
Thank you. So yeah, that's happening Tuesday, and I apologize to pull you guys out on another night. But it was back and forth with the attorney, and by the time we realized that the whole committee had to vote it before the chair signed it, we missed the posting date for Wheatley and Sandlin, that already happened because the town office is being closed. So, this meeting probably could have pulled it off, but yeah.
You should be receiving a copy of the negotiated contract.
Okay.
Has been agreed to with Darius by myself and Bob Howell as the chairs of the respective committees. We will send that out so that people will have a chance to digest it before the meeting. I will not be at the meeting.
All right.
I'll be out of town, but there will be a quorum present. If you have questions when you get to contract and want answers, just give a call to myself or Bob, where there is.
Yep.
But it was a very smooth conversation, actually.
That was point to you. Your question, that's.
Turn my back. But yeah, feel free to give a call, and that can, if you have any concerns, but it's in line, it's a five-year contract, there's no wrinkles, it's basically changing the wording on the interim contract that was issued, and eliminating the meetings clause out of the agenda, and he felt confident enough that he has been able to sort of set things up, and once negotiations die out, his schedule next year would be more in keeping with what he hopes to find, so.
So, that's exciting. Great.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes. So, we can adjourn unless anybody wants to go to executive session. All right, so.
We'll continue with you.
I'm going to go on there, and we are.